All right, go ahead and call the commissioners' work session as the thirtieth order. Anything that's said in this meeting will become part of public record if this is being reported. There's no pause for public hearing, any old items of discussion. One minor thing, I'll wait till general discussion, all right. Under new items of discussion, we have BEI cleaning contract amendment, the meeting schedule for 2020, and durable slate. So, BEI contract, turn it on and on.
Currently BEI is doing the office cleaning, they pick up the trash. The jail staff brings the inmates around at night to pick up the garbage that's out in the hall, the cardboard, things like that, and to do the bathrooms on, in the basement, first floor and second floor. And they're supposed to vacuum the hallways and the stairwells. Well, with the jail being very short-staffed, it is not getting done, and they don't have the staff to have people come around. So, we had asked BEI to give us an amendment to our current contract. It would actually be an additional $22,564 a year for them to give three more hours, but that would do the front foyer and the stairs, the hallways, all the public bathrooms, they would have the entire cleaning contract just as bonded did in the past.
I'm inclined to look again at hiring a part-time cleaning maintenance person for one reason being that they could take out work really salvageable inmate in order to help with that work sometimes, but they could be ultimately responsible for it, maybe twenty-some grand in part-time, you know, get hired a part-timer for that. And then, the other reason is, we would have an employee that if we needed support for other things, such as, you know, toilets overflow, you know, need basic groundskeeping kind of things outdoors, then we would have somebody on staff that we could just call immediately and say...
But these are things that are done in the evening?
I know. I'm saying that if we had an emergency situation, there could be somebody that we would be able to rely upon in the event that the rest of maintenance personnel just won't.
Because basically, they allocate CO to walk them around the whole time, so...
Right. And they're using people that are not necessarily work-really salvageable. In this scenario, you might or might not get somebody that is work-really salvageable to help out.
Yeah, no, I'm...
Only for the additional three hours of work, they can't go into the offices.
Correct. So essentially, what I'm proposing is rather than having corrections officer walk around with inmates, have a part-time maintenance person responsible for doing it, and sometimes they may be able to take out work-really salvageable inmates, sometimes they may not.
So, sorry. It just sounds really high. I know I wasn't supposed to talk, I'm sorry.
It does twenty, what, thousand?
Twenty-two, almost twenty-three thousand.
Well, I think the thing is too is that we could, I think we could have a conversation with BEI too about that number, just because I got the impression that perhaps it was a first pass on not much information. And I'd like to see if we could get them to reduce it as well. I don't have a problem with, you know, having another, frankly, my maintenance help anyway. My only concern is that, again, it's going to be done pretty much in the evening. So even if we had a few hours per person scheduled, they're not going to be able to, they'll be able to help like maybe towards the end of the day. My perspective on it is, is, you know, even if we bid that out, say, you know, it comes in thousands of dollars, tons and thousands of dollars. I mean, this is another issue with the staffing at the jail, you know, is like, they don't have, the big challenge with them are, is actually the female COs, because the women's dorm is doing the cleaning, and they don't have, like, the whole females correction officer out. That's the big challenge, more than anything else, to have them walk around. And certainly, I'm sure Collins would be happy to have somebody that would be able to take that responsibility from them. I just, my only concern is just the timing of it, just because of, because they usually are through here at midnight, you know, ten o'clock. I mean, I'm sure they could get them out earlier than that, but I don't, we want to talk to them.
But with the shortage, we're not getting cleaning done. You know, they're not sweeping, they're not...
Oh, no, I'm not trying to, I understand the shortcomings of the program, and like you said, they have, they, when they don't have a female CO, they can take the female inmates around, and that becomes an issue, at least that's my understanding. I may be wrong about that, but, you know, their shift is in the middle of the, you know. And, I mean, I don't see why it couldn't get done, you know, five or six o'clock, you know, like, you know, but that's something we've talked to Collins about, I guess.
But hey, either way, we okay with at least evaluating the options?
Oh, absolutely.
I think you could do it for, not half that, but two thirds of staff, probably.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're taking inmates around, yeah.
Word from Collins figured they were putting in about $10,000.
Word from staff, huh? That's probably about right. So, okay.
We're gonna do it.
As for the meeting schedule, one thing that we heard a desire for in the, I forget if it was the town halls maybe, was that occasionally we have evening meetings to allow the public that works during the day to come, at least have the option of coming. So, for commissioners' meetings, obviously, we still need to, I'm thinking, one of them should be a meeting here like we have currently, and then potentially, the second meeting could be an evening meeting, probably still here. Because from what I remember, everyone's saying, it doesn't increase interest. I mean, if we need a special meeting in a community for some reason, I'm happy to set that up.
Honestly, at the very least, at the new meetings, the staff shows up.
Yeah, exactly. Right, and it's very helpful and definitely...
Like folks in the courthouse will say, nah, don't do it.
Yeah, right, which I think is of great value.
Yeah.
So, let's at least keep one of them.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea.
What time do you want them in the evenings?
I wouldn't do, I wouldn't do any later than six, frankly, I'd probably have to keep it five.
So you might have, might have more people show up, like, right from work, come straight from work.
Yeah.
So like five?
Yeah, well, plus the shares of biddies then don't have to, because they have to stay here to man, you know.
There's one on anyway, on Wednesdays, but, but yeah, if we needed to have another one, good point. So, most people get out at three-thirty or four-thirty or five, so, yeah.
I would probably do five-thirty personally.
Yeah, yeah, you're probably right, five-thirty, because a lot of people do get out at five.
Sounds good.
And the first one's still at noon?
Yeah, I think that works, right. Okay, work sessions, keep them the same. And again, if you need to have a roving work session, we can do that.
Well, I just think, like, you know, we've done the town halls, we've done, you know, we do...
Yeah, right.
We go to all the COG meetings, we go to all the township meetings. Like, I don't know that there's ever, in a long time, been a group of commissioners that have spent more time coming to public meetings and trying to engage the community, so...
And salary boards still after the...
Yeah, I advertise those immediately following the commissioners' meeting, and the salary board could still be quarter, oh, no, I'm sorry, not salary board, the retirement board could still be quarterly.
After the first meeting in the month?
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're going to be seven o'clock for retirement board.
Yes, correct. Prison board, do we advertise that, or is prison board...
And those are the last Tuesday, one-thirty every other month.
And that does conflict with Thanksgiving and Christmas every year, right?
Uh, sometimes.
Close to that. If we had to consider moving that up a week maybe, do you think? Would that be a burden to jail or anything? Third, okay.
Really?
Third, Thursday, Tuesday?
I'm sorry, we lost one somewhere at the beginning there.
Prison board, I was thinking moving it up a week, because sometimes it falls on holidays, aren't you?
Yeah, the TAC board always, it always falls in the same because of TAC boards.
Oh, that's another reason, yeah.
That's why I'm probably there.
Any other public meetings we need to set?
Uh, budget. Be the same.
Yeah, same time frame.
I think that's it.
Okay.
So I can get my dates and get them up to the courts.
Can we, can you put together, again, a schedule for all the proclamations that we do over the course of the year? And then, so that we can have a conversation about gearing up for those in advance, to get folks that are related to show up. They really enjoy that, and they give the, you know, they give them the proclamations and stuff, and that's, it'd be nice to do. They will be all prepared for that.
Okay, that is it.
That's it.
All right, Julie, you're up.
All right.
Mayhem.
So, I'm Julie Butler, I'm the lead project manager for this project, and I'm also the preservation director for Dural Slate and Dural Restoration Company. So, any of our most historic projects or somewhat unique projects, I typically either work with or project manage directly. So, to give you a little bit of background on this project, we decided this is, this was a functional repair rather than an aesthetic one. It was sorely needed, and we expect that the work that we completed absolutely will functionally fix some of the issues that you all were dealing with. Now, I'm not allowed to guarantee any sort of leak prevention, but I feel confident...
We're recording this, it's okay.
Yeah, exactly, that's why. But I feel confident that you all are going to be seeing any issues in the near future or the far future. So, here we go. To give you an idea, it didn't look terrible from far away, but once you got close up, I would venture to say that on a particularly windy day, you probably had some paint flux in the air coming from the courthouse. It really was just falling off in some places. So, the work completed specifically, we repaired and repainted the metal window surrounds and the vertical hips on the historic portion of the building, and then the hips and the cornice of the 1926 edition. We repaired and repainted the wood dormers, which there were seven, from the 1926 edition. And then, we repaired missing and damaged slates on this historic portion, we didn't need a new slate. That is to include slates that had been previously repaired and then had a bead of copper placed over them. The copper, lifespan of copper is about five years, so those had failed and were allowing water intrusion. So those were repaired with a bit of flashing, which is far more durable. And then, in the back, we actually replaced all of the slate that was up there. It was a lower-quality slate that had deteriorated to a point of needing replacement. So that's been replaced with slate that matches in kind with the slate we have in the historic portion. And then, we actually also, in addition to the flashings on the slate roof, there's a lot more copper under there than you could ever believe, but that's how slate roofs function. We did also replace the box gutter, which is essentially a very large gutter that was holding all of the water for that entire roofing system in the back. It had been previously repaired with some rubber. Once we remove that rubber, you'll see some pictures that I think are very telling, and I'm very glad that you didn't replace that box gutter, because it was not functioning at all. I want to thank our artisans, our employees, our craft people. These are people that, for the most part, give everything to this job. Paul Ostrillo, he was our foreman, he was here every single day this summer. He, I think, there's blood, sweat, and tears up there of his, and he certainly gave everything to this project, so I'm very, very happy that he was here, and a really great foreman for this project. So, this is the structure in the front as we see it today. Specifically, we repaired, let's see if I can do this, these dormers, anything that surrounded a window, and then also the hips, which I don't understand them, which are these curved portions here. We also did the curved portions up here, and then the sunburning windows at the very top. So, specifically, those were the pieces of metal that had seen the most deterioration. They're away from the structure, they're the ones getting the most rubber. So, they were in desperate need. The repairs included filling in holes with appropriate filler, and then using a rust neutralizer and converter in any surface rusting, not pit rusting. And then, we did a prime and a paint, two coats of an exterior grade paint on top of that. And I think you'll see that in just a moment. So, this is as we saw things, once we scraped the metal, did some of the repairs. We did a little bit of bonded work, you can see here, and at a couple other locations. We re-secured any metal that was slightly loose. We didn't see, we didn't find any very loose metal, so that was good. But we re-secured any that we did find. You were saying here, some metal that, see, this is a little loose, that was re-secured. And then, obviously, the scraping paint. There was some locations that had lead, some that didn't, different paint, different hairs. Any of the lead paint was abated appropriately, so that it didn't get into the air. We did air sampling and testing to make sure of that. So, if you saw our guys with bright white suits and respirators, it's simply because that's a safe way to handle it, didn't mean that the public was at risk at any point. I think it is interesting to note how much metal detail there is on this historic structure. It is something that architecturally is very unique to this time period and the French Second Empire, which is the architectural style of the historic structure. The French Second Empire is the same style as the move in Paris or the Eisenhower Building in Washington, DC. And in the 1950s, that style was essentially what we would see as a 1970s strip mall. Everyone wanted to tear them down, so there's actually not that many left in the United States. So, we're very lucky to find these more functional buildings, such as a courthouse or an office building, because those are less likely to be torn down than private homes. So, we're very, you all are very lucky to still have this structure, because I'm telling you, the 1950s was not a good time for this style. But the metal trend is very indicative of that time period. It allowed them to build a little bit quicker than they had before. The craft is still as difficult as using wood, but it's more durable. And as you can see, these are original pieces, for the most part, and they're over 120 years old. So, I don't think there's wood up there that's 120 years old.
I, I hadn't, when you started this, I think that's the thing that surprised me the most about it, is I didn't realize how much metal was up there. Because, I mean, all of it's painted, you know, a lot of it, you just...
You assume it's plaster. Now, there is some plaster up there, the rosettes that are at the top of some of the windows are actually these cast stone, my plaster's wrong, where there are these cast stone rosettes, which is, again, very interesting. And that is actually pretty uncommon, so I don't know if that's a later repair, but it is interesting. So, as you can see, as we were scraping it, this is what it looked like. Now, some areas saw very little rust, whereas others saw a great deal, probably past painting. This is slightly more accessible than some of the other areas, so it might have been painted more, and therefore, less rust was able to develop. I showed this earlier, as the amount of paint flaking, if you were to just touch it, that paint actually came off very easily. So, it was a clean substrate, probably repainted it. This is more of the back area. This is actually the pan that we went back and forth a lot to replace, I think they'll be really pleased to see. So, it was original, it was originally done poorly. And the fix that we did, which helped me to do a great deal more slick actually, is the correct way to do it. Typically, I don't advocate to do things better than they were, but in this case, this is purely a functional, very small corner of the building, we wanted it done correctly. But as you can see below, there was a decent amount of formal repairs here, some wood rot, but we were able to fix all that as we went in. This was the box gutter underneath the plastic, so you can see just how rusted it was. And then, the wood was, in some cases, missing from deterioration. So, it was, it was not, not looking so good. But it also explains why these areas were in such bad shape. It actually was wicking up. So, the box gutter, as you can see, has this very steep profile. The reason they're so large, I mean, they're like this big, is it's getting all the way, not just from that small roof, but from the top roof. Because the plastic that was in there, it was only draped over, it's actually missing a lot of volume. So, as you mentioned, that gutter was overflowing. And it wasn't just overflowing in this direction, it actually was wicking up into the dormers. So, the replacement there was, it's funny, because it wasn't part of the original contract, but to me, functionally, might have been the biggest part of this project.
Me, in the conversations we had this morning with contractor here about the sidewalk that's at the base of the building, and they were talking about the level of deterioration, like, in the sandstone at the base or whatever, and, and, you know, because we're filling that in and everything, and I, and I told them, you had to stand out there when there was a heavy-duty rainstorm, because there was a waterfall on this side of the building.
Yeah.
You know, just, I mean, all around, the amount of water that was coming up there just seemed really excessive, and...
And it was.
And when it hits the ground, it kicks up into the, into the sandstone, and then also deteriorates the sidewalk, because it's...
Absolutely, and if there's one thing I feel, whenever I speak to clients, I always try and say that number one thing is make sure your gutters are working correctly, because if they're not working, that's your first line of defense. And I think people forget about gutters, I think it's no big deal, but it really is such a big, big thing to focus on, so I'm glad you guys did it correctly. That's, it's going to be a huge difference.
I'm glad you convinced us.
Yeah. I feel strongly about very minor things, but this is mine. So, going back to the front, I want to point out the existing conditions of the COG joints that I'm sure you didn't notice until we pointed them out, but they were everywhere. I think we counted something like 347.
Seventy.
Yeah, and so that affects two slates, right? So that's five, what, 690, no, you have 90s. And so, they were all over areas that had clearly seen water infiltration. Someone said, hey, let's fix the leak, we're going to COG all the joints. The problem is, not only does it connect each of these slates with the slate underneath it, so it doesn't move independently any longer, and therefore, can cause some sheer force cracks, which we didn't actually see any, so that's good. But it also deteriorates, and then your leak is right back to where it was. You know, it's only a five-year fix, when you consider how much effort it takes to even get up there in the first place, it seems silly. So, the repair for that is to remove the copper, and then to slip a piece of metal underneath, hook it up, and then, we do actually COG it to the single slate below. So, it's, the problem with COG is you certainly don't want it to be with, you don't want the sun to be hit by it, because it's not heat-resistant, and then, you don't want it to be connecting slates. So, in this case, it wasn't connected with slate, it's simply just on the bottom to hide the nail hole, and that's where the water's getting in, the nail hole. So, I'll go back, I'll show you a before and after of those short ones, right? They seem a little out of order, but in any case, that's your metal, that's your former box gutter, with those paper fins. And as you can see, it had actually really waked up far further than even we were seeing the deterioration. So, a big, a big, you're going to see a big difference there. So, this is the picture I wanted to show. So, you've got the, the COG lines here, COG lines here. Once we repaired them, this is what it looks like.
Yeah, I noticed that...
It's a virtually unnoticed fix, and it's completely, I can't guarantee it, but it's watered. I'm not allowed to. But so, we did those, I mean, they were all over the building, truly all over the building, so... These are those windows all the way at the top. I wanted to show you, we painted even behind, even not every, every, some contractors would say, no, you can see it out there. Not at all. We painted every single portion of it correctly, without it being painted all over the slates next door. I'm sorry.
It's still rusty, even if it is behind there.
Uh, yes, exactly, exactly. So, there is more work to be done. Obviously, we didn't paint everything, as that was not part of our contract, but I know Paul looks forward to coming back if given the opportunity, because, like I said, I think this place falls a special place in his heart now. He knows it more intimately than most people, having personally painted these, these 180-foot-high windows.
Well, I'd say too, with the paint, with the new paint, there's a revitalization to the building, where there's a lot of detail that I think was lost, because it had faded, you know?
Sure, as the paint flakes and it builds volume on top, you start to lose some of the really interesting details, such as the rosettes, which in many cases, couldn't see very well at all. I wanted to highlight this picture, because this is a hip going up towards the COG tower. So, each of these pieces are individual pieces, almost like a shingle, but we didn't ensure that each one was connected, so that even though the rain would simply fall off of it, we wanted to make sure that any sort of rain, wind-driven rain, couldn't get in any other way. So, I think this picture really shows the, the care that Dural put forth that maybe wasn't even specked or needed, but we care about what we do, so, arguably too much sometimes.
Little question, when you were up there, did you notice any cracks in the windows, in the glass themselves?
No.
Okay.
No cracks were observed in any of the windows, they all look good. So, I know that Paul, because, and I don't want to reveal this, but it affects my bottom line sometimes, but it's good for you. He's a perfectionist, and that doesn't, doesn't do justice to just how bad it is. But he did actually, he ensured COG joints were filled around all the windows. He did just slap some paint on it. It's, the windows were very much taken care of. He said, well, if someone's up there, they're going to, they need, we need to do it now. I said, okay, that's true. So, anyway, we've got a little more bankroll about all the windows, I think.
He probably told you the same thing I told my wife, you know, which is, I don't know that it's there.
Oh, yeah, no. He does, right, yeah.
Yeah, you, this is, yeah.
That's exactly it. He, I have, I have had to tell him, please do not polish the copper, it is so high up, no one will see it, we're not supposed to polish it, do not, do it. And he does listen, but it just goes to show the amount of care that he has for these structures, and it really frees you back in. So, these are some renovated roof photos. So, this, I mean, it's stunning, the way that it shines now. Unfortunately, I think it highlights the areas that weren't touched, but maybe that's a good thing. It does, in any case, show the general public that preservation isn't just a quick fix. It takes time, it takes effort, it takes a whole summer to do part of a building. And I think sometimes people think that building maintenance is just something that happens over time, but they can be in some cases, these sorts of capital projects. And frankly, I, as a preservationist, kind of like the dichotomy that we're seeing here, because it's going to show people that historic structures aren't static, they must continue till they, they must move forward. And the work that we did for you, I hope exemplifies that for the citizens of Warren County, because it's, you have a lot of historic fabric here.
I think that there's a lot of folks that see the contracts now, and maybe it's more real for them. Because I was amazed when we, when we, at the very beginning, whatever, it was a year and a half or two years ago, when we first started talking about this, talking to people about the courthouse and the condition of different... about the courthouse and the condition of different parts of it. And they were like, seems fine to me.
Right.
You know, like we just could not see the, the levels of deterioration in different parts of the building. And it was like, I mean, you know, I don't know if you have worked in a contracting field to see it, but I just, every time I would walk past, I would just, you know...
I think I certainly notice things more than the average person. But that goes with, right, my background and the, the work that I do. But I think when you pass by a structure, if it's part of your cultural heritage, sometimes you just walk by it and it's the same that it's always been to you, even in some cases when it's been restored. But I like how bright our restoration is here because I think on some bright days, it might be lighting and that, that is important.
Hi, Mr. Owen. This one window here is around. As many times as I've been up there. I find when I'm up there when it was actually raining real hard and that window there did have a, it did have a gash in it that you could see right out of.
Oh, yeah.
Couldn't tell because I saw water leak because I followed the water trail to it. So, yeah.
Yeah, and...
That was a good thing to be fixed.
Yes. Seeing daylight through a roof is typically pretty bad.
So there used to be, in old pictures I've seen, something almost as akin to like a three-foot urn by maybe six feet tall.
Okay.
We have it, one of the two, at the warehouse, I believe.
On here?
Is that where that goes?
Yeah.
I did find it strange that there would be a head in here for...
No reason.
Yeah, there were urns on both those corners and I think on a couple of areas.
Okay.
It's a back there.
So if you're in the market, we can replicate those.
Well, we, we have the cast, I believe.
Oh, we can restore, I mean, obviously, no, we can restore them. But we...
But I don't know where the others are, so I think we have one.
I think we have one and make them.
Okay.
Certainly, no.
I remember there were originally six or eight of them because they went on the corners of the, of the roof.
There are each one of this.
I thought there was one, I thought there were like two in the middle.
Two there, two there, four, probably eight.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's a picture, there's several pictures floating around of them before they were taken off. Because I even think, wasn't there a fence too, like a rail that went around it?
It makes sense.
I don't know.
Well, if, if I can think most about Durble briefly, we did win an IFD award, which is the International Federation for Roofing, on Friday. We were the only American company nominated, but it's for our ornamental copper work that we completed in W. Fargo. We did a hundred and ninety-foot staple completely in copper. It's like the Grammys of the roofing world. And, and we, we were awarded that on Friday. So if you want someone to do good copper work or metal work, we are your people. And Paul actually worked on that job. Not surprisingly, I'm sure. So I can actually personally... I just want to point out, so, but it's true. I mean, did you realize on the detail that was in?
Yeah.
It's really good.
Yeah.
It's stunning. And because thankfully the paint came off so, you know, because it was just contracted for a dry scrape, no paint strip or anything, which probably you didn't need because the paint swallowed off. But you're able to see these little medallions here, these flowers, the medallion, the flower on top. And the dentals really, really pop out. And then on top of that, I just want to point out over here, these almost pyramid shaped, which I think, I don't know that you really ever saw before. So it's, it's really unique. And I'm glad that this, this window was done because it's such a spotlight on the building. So here's your new box gutter. Stunning developer. We did replace a decent amount of wood below it so that everything below it is sound. And then it is soldered into the current downspouts. But that could be replaced at a later time. Shouldn't we need to replace the downspouts? It won't affect the box gutter.
Shane, did you say that those were different metal types?
They are.
Right, so we really should replace it probably, right?
It's not an immediate need, but yes. An appropriately functioning downspout. And in this case, copper is the appropriate metal, even if it's painted copper.
It's either copper or turned stainless.
Yeah.
Other than these materials.
I...
I don't know what they use up here.
I wanted to highlight this picture, which is during picture because there's so much copper underneath the roof that you don't see. And I think that that's important to note because sometimes you just look up there and you're like, oh, it's a slate roof. But realistically, anytime that a roof pitch changes or anything happens, there's soldered copper. In our case, not everyone uses copper. We do because it's what you should do. And I think that, I, I just wanted to point that out to you so you could know that it's not just a new slate roof. It's actually a new copper roof underneath as well. So that's very, that's, it's noteworthy. And then you will have these W valleys. Valleys can either be just plain or they could have a little W pitch to actually funnel water a little bit better. So that's what you had before. And then this roof now is slate, but it was a shingle roof. This little gable here on the front and then the gable on the back. So those are now slate.
Can you just show them just how high up that copper goes, where you say?
What do you mean?
How high up actually goes the gutter.
The gutter, oh, it goes, I mean, it goes to like up here.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
True information that's...
Yes, the gutter, you can actually see here how much, how high it's going. Several courses up.
I don't know if I can turn it on my aspect on what McCreary's doing with it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, had McCreary coated it, not McCreary, had anyone coated it, it just wouldn't have lasted. I mean, the wood rot would still be there, the wood, the metal rusting would still be there. The core rubber would still be there. You'd still have the same issue, you would have just put a coating on it, so. This, this will last you a hundred years, if not longer.
Is that a guarantee?
But I know to work that I don't personally feel confident about, so. So that's this area now slated just on the other side. And there's brand new cop original at the top. You didn't have that before because it was slate, or shingle, asphalt shingle. Now it's a beautiful, green purple slate roof. I don't know if you had an opportunity to see the guys' work, but the way they cut slate is absolutely fascinating. In fact, when I started with Durble, it was the most shocking thing to me. They use essentially a paper cutter. It's, it's slate cutter, but it looks like a paper cutter. And they just, and they don't get around. I mean, that's a very straight line for independently installed slate. And it's not just...
When you said paper cutter, is it hydraulic? I mean, what is it?
Nope. It's just on a hinge. Our guys are just cut, cut, cut.
Kind of like a tile cutter.
Yeah.
Like a tile.
But it cuts the slate not as one. One side stays solid, the other falls away into as dust. It's very interesting. And so, I mean, they really did cut it quite perfectly. Something that I want to point out, I know I've, this has been like, Julie's very proud of Paul Osterl, but I am very proud except for this. Not everyone do this. He did. He lined up each of these slates here so that they actually follow the course on the main roof. It's not an easy thing to do. He didn't have to do it. It wasn't specked that way, but that's something he was very proud of. And I wanted to point it out to Paul because I think it's worthy of praise. So all of your dormers, whether you can see them or not, I know the jail guard will be able to really appreciate all the hard lines and the hard work. And then this is the area where we formerly had that white piece of metal that was done somewhat incorrectly. So now it's completely slated all the way up. There is a copper pan all the way behind it. And then we actually did connect it to the box gutter into the limestone as well. So that is the way it should have been done in nineteen twenty-six. So now it's, it's finally done correctly. We had to use one of our smaller guys to fit in there, but it, it was done right. So very pleased with how that turned out. And should be far more watertight. Just a pretty picture of a ridge roll. So that's the very top of one of the gable ends. The ridge roll will ensure that no water gets behind that, so. Any questions?
Julie, maybe you can tell them all about the wood restoration part of it here?
Yes, oh, the...
Process.
So the process for the dormers, the wood dormers in the back, basically, as we started taking the slate off, pieces of the trim came off in our hands. So we preserved those using, any that we could preserve, we used a product called Babatron, which is called liquid wood. And that's exactly what it is. It actually takes rot or dry rot wood and gives it strength, both somewhat structural, but also just preserves the historic fabric because that is, I think, a contributing factor, aspect of the addition. And then anything that we couldn't replicate or that was missing, because some pieces were missing, we actually, or couldn't repair, we did replicate. Everything was then coated with primer, two coats of top coat paint and then reinstalled and then touch up painted, of course, in sight. The guys, we, we did replace a few areas with, we didn't replace in-kind wood because there's a long, I mean, pine, hardwood pine is no longer available. It was extinct about a hundred years ago. So we, we used cedar, I believe, or oak. I need to check, but I have to receive. So it is, in terms of quality, is in-kind because using pine from today is not the same quality as pine from a hundred years ago. So it looks good. I'm really pleased with the way it will function. And a lot of the deterioration we were seeing, we wrongfully thought was due to rain coming from above. When we took out that box gutter, that's when we noticed it was actually wicking up. So the way that we repaired it, you know it's gonna look great for a really long time. I'm really pleased with that, so.
And you also added, maybe you said this in a gloss, but we added a piece of copper and different things.
So we did, and we, we added copper where it was necessary. And then we actually did that pan because we, once we found that the water was wicking up rather than coming from the top, the copper, the cladding, the sills wasn't needed. So that's when we, we did change it over to doing the pan in the corner. And I think that was a really wise choice simply because the copper cladding was superfluous at that point. But that corner flashing and pan was really needed. So you got, something, I, I never wanted to work that's unneeded. And I want to make sure that for the money that you are spending, you are getting a product that is the best product I could give you. And, and I think that that's really what we did here. I know there were a couple changes and things that we did, but it was really for the benefit of the structure.
What, I guess I was talking specifically about the pieces where?
The scrolls.
Yeah, you put like little pieces of metal on the wood.
There is metal on the back and it's flashing that should have been there with the original dormers when it wasn't there. So there is wood, there's a sort of pan apron on the back to ensure that the water funnels right into that box gutter rather than into any wood pieces or anything like that. Yeah. And those dormers are, I mean, those dormers shouldn't be.
Yeah, no, I was just really impressed with all the detail work. Because I, I take breaks and then go watch out the window and walk out there and then watch you put this up again. It was just so fascinating to see.
And they did a lot of it on site. We didn't, usually break a lot of the metal off-site. We just have hydraulic brakes and things like that. But we actually brought our field brake here because the metal was so specific that we felt it was more important to do it on-site, being able to measure, okay. You know, and, and so that's why we did bring our field brake. I know that it was a bit of a hassle for a little while, but it gave you a better product ultimately.
Yeah, when they have the big sheets of, of copper out there and they were bending, I mean, I, you know, just to get, you got a better sense of the size and volume.
The, the sheer amount of copper that's up there is, is very surprising. I think it's something that if you're not in the roofing trade, you don't realize just how much copper and metal goes into a slate roof. So. Any other questions?
So what are we going over tonight?
Whenever, what would like. I'm happy to just walk around the building and just kind of point out, you know, we fixed this window. This was a metal repair, this was a wood repair. This is a new slate roof, this was a slate repair. Just kind of pointing out what we did, I think, is what the public would like to see.
Okay, good. More question for you guys, probably. We were gonna do a next scope related to these things. Replacing the downspouts would probably be on that list. I'd like to explore the idea of putting at least the front two urns back on, if that's possible. There are other things that didn't get painted. And I was a little unclear as to what, I know that Durble did more than their scope, but at least right underneath the eaves though needs to be done, correct? Or what, what is still left to do?
Everything below the roof line.
Yeah.
Everything's below the roof line.
Well, you had some on the flat towers as well.
Right.
And it was with urn set, most of it weren't done.
And then there's the cornice.
Yeah, the cornice and, and the pedals.
So there's still a pretty significant...
Still a lot of network needs to be painted.
Are you guys still able to provide a, just even a leggerity number?
Yes, I would expect that the number will be similar to, the, the amount of time. I don't know about material, I don't know on an estimate, but the amount of time should be about what it took to undertake this project that we just did. So underneath the eaves is extremely detailed. That means that it's not just flat painting, it's flat, 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 flat. You know, so it's pretty much all, so.
I think it's pretty can.
I would say also. The windows above, you want to just paint all of them.
Yeah, all of them.
Well, that was the other thing we talked about, like two was separating out into two projects.
So certainly the most important thing that I think you need to focus are the gable, the triangle pediments. There's, there, there's a few of them. Those in terms of functionality, not just aesthetics, those need to be addressed first. And then any sort of eaves. So something, anything where the rain might hit, which in this case, you've got that flat part, but those are really quite rusted, so that's something to look into.
Okay.
In terms of priority.
Tell me more about the, refresh my memory on repointing the brick. That's still relatively high prior.
There are, I'm trying to remember. There are a few areas that definitely need it. Like from twenty-five addition. On this side, these corners.
I saw that.
If you look at it, it's flattened, it does that. They did it right with the exception of the wrong caulk. Because it's, it's a hard caulk instead of flexible caulk. Here he's like silicone, it's flexible. Because it's acting different from the print, which probably did something in there because the water got behind it.
Okay.
So that should be removed and re-run, probably according to the bill.
That is something.
I think that's your worst part of the R. In the feasibility study, you'll see that there's areas pointed out.
Julie, you used caulk in some area. Do we have to be cognizant of going back in five, 10 years and checking those things or not?
The caulk that we use in the areas is specifically in this case not, the, the thing that damages caulk the most in the process is UV. Everything's been coated, so we don't expect that to be an issue. Something to look into for if you're using caulk within bricks. Sandmastic is a type of mortar, actually with linseed oil, that's flexible. If you do any brick or stonework, please give us a call. Our masonry division is...
We're gonna, up here in the five, probably be, they cut extension joints in it. I think that was correct.
Yeah.
But they use the wrong caulk in it or cement, whatever.
Whatever it was, yeah.
Or, or they just filled it with mortar and it was very hard.
Yeah, so is it, if there's, well, in any case, we'd be happy to look at it and give it down. Yeah, so, is it, if there's, well, in any case, we'd be happy to look at it if given the opportunity, because, because we hear about this building now, so.
If the caulk is coated, then it's not gonna be a big issue.
Yeah, it gives it far more longevity. I mean, it's something to look into, you did have the cementals with the caulk, if it needs to be. None of the work we did with the caulk where you would need to look at it is hard to access.
You don't have to apply silicone, that's a whole lot longer.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't chalk and paint all of this stuff, it doesn't crack.
Yeah, and the, and the caulk that we gave those, that we submitted, in the future, I would suggest if anyone's doing any maintenance, just to use that same one. So, roofing, specifically a roofer's caulk.
Pull up specifically out of the cemental shop, and then get to you guys, this is what you want to use in the future, so.
It's all silver sealant. I'm happy to share products, it's the best for the building, so.
I'm sure we'll have more questions tonight, 5 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 9 o'clock?
Yeah, so, right, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And then in the future, going forward, if you ever have questions, hey, what products do you use here? Or what do you, hey, this is weird, what do you think? You know, Durbel likes to form relationships, hence me being here. We, like I mentioned, we fall in love with these structures, and we, you know, want to stick around, so. Please don't hesitate to come over. And we take them in the news, so. If I'm not there anymore, which I don't foresee, someone can always look into the news.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you in the ceiling. Any product updates in the last three minutes before budget session start? The only thing I wanted to update on was highlight House Bill 1069, which is a slightly flawed amendment that a friend of mine, Representative Aaron Bernstein, is pushing. And we already actually incorporated most of this into our best practices. The main thing is that it's requested, it's ensuring that an agenda be posted for voting meetings 24 hours in advance. And the only exception would be if there's an emergency, it would be allowed for the majority of the board to vote, to put something on the agenda. And, or if it didn't have monetary significance, so we could vote on like a task force, or, you know, proclamations and stuff like that, but not accept contracts or bids and such without 24 hours having enough on our county website. So, looks like they're actually pretty good with legislation. If anything, we're gonna love the bird to do that. There's some other EMS stuff that CCAP just sent out, but I'll save that for EMS Task Force and update everybody at that one. Anything more for the Goody Order?
Just want to remind everybody of my office is closed the rest of the week.
It feels like you said that every week.
Did you get another conference ad? You're getting certified again, it's that time of the month, isn't it?
Annual certification every 30 weeks. And Fridays too.
I'm working on that. Also, there is an organization that's doing a fundraiser for our emergency fund, for doing spaghetti dinner at Cabin in the Pines on the 4th of November. And they request that I specifically invite the commissioners to attend.
November 4th, what time?
November 4th. I'm hoping a flyer will land my budget this afternoon.
Very good. And can you forward the information from the woman who came here last week? Did you do that already?
I sent her an email requesting information, and I have not received a response.